Welcome everyone to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, December twenty second, two thousand twenty. We'll call the meeting to order. Any, uh, council agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you tonight.
Alrighty, invocations from Pastor Stephen from O'Keefe's Covenant Church. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city leaders and council members. As a new minister in the community this year, I want to thank the city of Hutchinson. This evening, I pray for your gift of wisdom, unity, and peace to be poured out upon our city council members. May they graciously hear each item that is before them today and make clear decisions that will continue to assist this community in its growth. May Hutchinson continue to be a city where families make their homes, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people in whatever stage of life find care and compassion, and where all people thrive. At this time of the year, I lift up and pray for families and persons experiencing the empty chair of a loved one who is no longer there. May we be a community that protects and uplifts the vulnerable and the brokenhearted. Sustaining Lord, may your presence be felt through the loving actions of another who shows care. May our actions lift heavy hearts. Now bless each council member as they carry out their work. I pray for Mary, Chad, Dave, Steve, and our mayor, Gary. May they have a sense of satisfaction in the work that has been accomplished here tonight. In your gracious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to pledges of allegiance, Dave, you want to do the honors?
Be my pleasure. Everybody stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which is
Thank you, Dave. Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight?
I had something there.
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
Just wanted to thank the VFW and the veterans groups for the work they're doing at VFW Park. I walked by there the other day and saw they're adding a canopy swords behind the backstop. They've just done a lot of work over there, helped us do a lot of work and supplied funds for that. So just want to say thanks.
Alrighty, we do have a resolution. We have resolution number one five two five nine. Resolution accepting twenty-five dollars donation from Thomas Kennedy for the law enforcement memorial park. We have a motion to accept that, please.
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to accept the donation. Roll call, Chad?
Aye.
Dave?
Sorry about that, aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alright, we do have proclamation under for that, one book, one community.
I know that Mary Henke is, will be joining us virtually, and so I don't know if you want to have her maybe first kind of introduce what the, the book is, and then you can do the proclamation afterwards, I guess it's up to you, so.
That would be wonderful, Matt.
So, go ahead, Mary, you're, you're good to go.
Well, first of all, I'm Mary Henke, usually I forget to say who I am, so I remember you this time. I'm here on behalf of the Book of One Community Committee, and I just want to thank you for recognizing our program that's now in its eighth year, and with this proclamation, Gary. There were so many things this year that we had to cancel, can't do anymore, that when our committee met, all were thinking, well, is there any way that we can have this program? Usually have a couple of in-person gatherings and book discussions throughout the committee, the community, and we thought, well, sure, there is. If an activity like co-reading that you do on your own, we couldn't figure out a way of tweaking it and making it work. That we just weren't being creative enough. And so we looked into different ways of doing it. So, of course, we can all read the book together. Usually we'd have these discussions throughout the community, but Zoom is a way for groups that have been meeting and discussing programs and books together, so we thought, well, that'll work. The biggest part of the program is the final event, where we have the author of the book that was selected, and now we do a program, signed books, sold books, that's been real popular, we put it out at the events center, we're splitting. And we draw from one hundred to two hundred people, and we knew that was not going to happen. And so we figured that, at that time, we thought, there must be some way out, and so we talked to HCBN, and we said, we can livestream the program. And now authors are very comfortable since they can go out and they're speaking to the book, so they're very comfortable. So, so we're working on my interviews, and so we have all the authors, and it's sure glad to direct. So we'll have some of Hutchinson interviewing, and who will be at home, and that people can register, they're watching online, livestreamed. And by working with HCBN, we are going to, or they're going to air it live.
Mary, you must have a real bad connection. We hardly can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it better now?
Little bit, yep.
Yeah, a little bit better, maybe a little bit closer to your mic.
Okay, hate to be very full face, but I do want you to hear about this. Anyway, we're doing everything online, and so, so we're having HCBN livestream the program, and you can register for it online, or it'll be recorded so that you can, you can watch it on HCBN. So, we're going to be able to have it that way. The book that we chose was This Tender Land. It's written by William Kent Krueger. He's a real popular author in, in our community, and he's a Minnesota author, so he's real well-known. And it's a novel. It's a story about four orphans. It's set in Minnesota during the, during the Great Depression in nineteen thirty-two. These kids are in a real abusive situation at an Indian mission boarding school. And so they flee the school, and they do it by escaping in a canoe near the Minnesota River, which runs right by their, their boarding school. So what they're doing is looking for a safe place to call home, and they meet all sorts of challenges and adventures on their trip. And so it's an exciting story, hopeful ending. So I figured we could use something with a hopeful ending, right? Anyway, this is funded by Pioneer Land Legacy Grant, and also by the Friends of the Hutchinson Public Library and the Thriving Grant. People that are partnering with us are Hutchinson Public Library, and Hutchinson Leader, and Hutch Health. So Melissa has a copy of the book. I hope you can share it with staff or anyone that you think would enjoy reading it. There's more information online or by calling the Hutch Public Library. So I hate to bother you with bad audio, but I hope you caught enough of it. If you have any questions, I'd say ask me, but maybe it'd be better to ask Katie. And again, thank you for supporting this.
Yep, Mayor and Council, here's the, the book, and these those for the public, so if anybody who's interested in, in going out and, and getting it and participating in the, in the one book, one community this, this, this year, so.
And thanks, Mary, for all you do for the library. I, I know it's a love of yours, and it sure shows, and we appreciate everything you do for, for the library.
Thanks, thanks. Like you said, it's a labor of love.
Well, it's a fun one for you, I'm sure. So thank you, thank you. Alright, proclamation, the city of Hutchinson believes connecting citizens as individuals in a common purpose is a powerful means of building a stronger community. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes strong community creates a stable and supportive society. Whereas the city of Hutchinson believes citizens of all ages who feel a sense of belonging tend to lead happier and healthy, healthier lives. Whereas the city of Hutchinson recognized that one book, one community, choice of William Kent Krueger's This Tender Land expands a sense of community through a wide range, wide-ranging discussions. Now therefore, I guarantee for sure, Mayor of Hutchinson, Minnesota, do proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-one as One Book, One Community Month. Alrighty, public comments. Matt, is there anybody that wants to address the council?
Nope, there is nobody here in attendance tonight.
Alrighty, approval of minutes, we have regular meeting minutes of December eighth, two thousand twenty. Truth and Taxation Hearing, minutes of December third, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve both those.
A second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve. Chad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A, we have approval of entering into a purchase agreement with McLeod County Treatment Programs Incorporated for purchase of one thirty-five Franklin Street Northwest. B is approval of resolution number one five two five four. Resolution to dispose of surplus property information technology items. C is approval of resolution number one five two six zero. Resolution to sell at auction surplus property, that's public works equipment. D is resolution number one five two five seven. Resolution adopting findings of facts and reason for approval of a conditional use permit for shoreline work in Eastman area located at one eight three zero West Shore Drive Southwest. And that's with favorable planning commission recommendation. E is approval of resolution number one five two five eight. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permits for outdoor storage in our one C zoning district located at eight forty-five Highway Seven West with favorable planning commission recommendation. F is approval of the two thousand twenty-one license renewals. G is appointment of Justin Beck to the Public Sarg Commission to two thousand twenty-three. H is approval of resolution number one five two six two. Resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed one-year extension for Open Order Incorporated to meet business subsidy goals. And I as claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off? Enter team a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Roll call, Chad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have a public hearing, but Matt, do, can we jump right ahead to number nine then?
Yeah, I think so. We've got fifteen minutes. I'm, I'm hoping that's enough, and if we have to delay the public hearing by a couple of minutes, I think that should be fine, so.
Alright, so discussion on general fund balance policy.
I think I'm going to hand it over to Andy Reed to kind of introduce this. I mean, this is something we've talked about probably on and off for the last year, year and a half or so, so I'll kind of hand it over to him.
Hey, good evening, council. Yeah, we've talked about fund balance, I guess, for over a year now. I was taking a look at some fund balance changes earlier in the year, and then the pandemic hit, so unfortunately got put on hold. But I do have a presentation we can go through tonight, just kind of briefly hit on some, some information that I put together, and then we can have some discussion afterwards. So, fund balance, I know we've talked about it quite a bit, but what is fund balance? And the accountant in me will tell you that the fund balance is essentially the difference between assets and liabilities reported in our general fund. It's the accumulation of the prior year's net surpluses and/or deficits of revenues over expenditures, but it's commonly referred to as our rainy day fund or reserves. So the state auditor recommends that we have a fund balance between thirty-five and fifty percent or no less than five months of operating expenses. Bond rating agencies don't have a recommended fund balance level, but they do look favorably on larger fund balances to protect against contingencies and cash flow needs. And essentially, they're looking for cash that's available to pay debt service in the event that our debt funds don't perform as expected, or if we run into any other issues. So our current general fund balance policy states that we will maintain an unrestricted fund balance in the general fund, if not less than forty percent of next year's general fund budgeted expenditures. This will assist in maintaining an adequate level of fund balance to provide for cash flow requirements and contingency needs because major revenues such as our property taxes and local government aid are received in the second half of the fiscal year. So essentially, we need that forty percent working capital to pay the bills, keep our programs and services running in between those time periods when we receive our funding. This graph shows our fund balance. It has two components. At the top, it has a, a line graph showing where our fund balance percentage has been over the last several years, and then the bar graph shows the fund balance amounts separated into the certain fund balance classifications. So starting with the bar graph, you can see the largest portion is our working capital. That's in the green. That's the forty percent we dedicate to our working capital based on the prior year's expenditures. So naturally, as our expenditures have increased over the years, so has our working capital needs. And then the area in blue, that's our unassigned fund balance, so that's essentially what's available to the city for emergencies or levy stabilization or other needs. And this amount has increased from one point five million ten years ago to two million last year. And then the area in tan or orange, that's our, that's our assigned or committed fund balance. And that's, that's committed by council for certain uses such as the Emerald Dash Borer Fund, or back when we had a mosquito control tax levy, drug forfeiture monies from the police. And you can see this category was fairly steady until two thousand eighteen, took a big drop. That's when we transferred the fund balance for our Emerald Dash Borer out of the general fund and into its own separate revenue fund, just to make, using those funds more manageable. And then last component within the bar graph is, is the little piece at the top in red. That's our non-spendable or restricted fund balance. And essentially, the only restricted fund balance we have on a, on a year-to-year basis is if we have any prepaid expenses at the end of the year. So that's considered restricted. And then at the line at the top, that's our fund balance percent, as I mentioned earlier, and you can see it's been fairly steady and then took a dip in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. Those were the two years where we used five hundred thousand dollars in each year to build the aquatic center, and then we brought five hundred thousand back into the general fund in two thousand eighteen from those hospital lease payoff monies that were sitting in our community improvement fund. So let's give the snapshot of where we have been over the years. So as we look to update our fund balance policy in two thousand twenty-one, it's going to be critical to identify and assess those risks that we face here in Hutchinson. And, and the biggest need is that working capital, as I mentioned earlier, but we can also carve some funds out to, to other risks that, that we may have, such as public emergencies, or balancing our budget, levy stabilization, or any other risks that councilor staff may have as we talk about policy. And once we determine those areas of risk, we're going to need to determine a percentage or a dollar amount to commit within our general fund balance. And just as a note, if we talk about percentages that we commit, those percentages will translate into amounts that fluctuate with our total expenditures since our fund balance percentages are based on our next year's expenditures. So this is just an example I put together to show you tonight of what we could do. These percentages are just something I put together, so nothing definite. But we'd have our working capital at forty percent, possibly five percent for public emergencies, three percent for levy stabilization efforts, two percent for other one-time needs, giving us a total committed fund balance of fifty percent. Our policy would also need to define how and for what the committed fund balance may be used, how to replenish any fund balance once it falls below the thresholds created by policy, how to handle excess fund balance. Do we transfer excess funds out for other needs? And then we obviously have to have some manual reporting and review with council, and also have to periodically review any committed fund balance targets, whether it's percentages or amounts. So here's the scenario I put together based on where I think we may end up at the end of two thousand twenty-one with a seven point nine, sorry, seven point nine million dollar fund balance. We'd reduce that by our restricted fund balance of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which is essentially drug forfeiture and E nine one one funds, giving us unrestricted fund balance of seven million six hundred and seventy-three thousand. Then we'd have our various committed fund balance percentages, and you can see that we just went through on the prior slide, totaling six million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand of total committed fund balance. We subtract that from our unrestricted fund balance to arrive at our unassigned or excess fund balance of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's a possible scenario of how things could play out with a new policy. So in summary, it's prudent to discuss our city risks and commit fund balance to those risks that we deem important. And what risks should the city commit fund balance to? We'll have to have those discussions. And we can have several committed fund balance amounts within the general fund rather than transferring monies out to a separate fund. And those committed amounts would be separately identified in our annual audit reports. And this next page is, is what it does look like in our annual audit report. You can see, I'll kind of make it a little bigger. You can see at the top is our non-spendable, then we go through our restricted fund balance with the general fund on the far left, I'm sorry. So you can see we have restricted fund balance of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, our committed working capital. This is the section where we would have different line items for any other needs such as levy stabilization or public emergencies. Those could, would fall under this committed category. And we have our assigned fund balance, and then at the, at the bottom are unassigned. So that's how it would look in our audit report. So with all that, I know reviewing or renewing a policy in two thousand twenty-one is going to require a few meetings to discuss and review, but with that said, I'll open it up now for any comments or questions, discussion?
Should we do this within like a workshop or two or three? Chad, I, I think, yeah, I think that's probably the, the best route to go on something like this. I think what we want to do is at least kind of prime the pump, if you want to say, to, to get some of those, those thoughts moving with the city council, because we're really going to have to get some direction from you guys on, you know, what's that, even I guess a policy, what's that going to look like to start with? I mean, we can obviously present some options, but we wanted to make sure that before, maybe we get into it, that we don't get too far down a rabbit hole without, you know, some direction from the council on, on desires and what they'd like to see. And so that kind of helps us at least kind of draft something, but I would agree, the next, the next step then discussion would be a more of a workshop type of level. And obviously, this is more of a specific question, but like, is the plan to carve a little bit of that fund balance off for the police station?
For funding the new facility?
Yes.
That's definitely an option, you know, as we look at, where's my sheet here?
And like, obviously, that wouldn't affect the policy, you know, we'd still have to have a policy in place, you know, but like, that would change some of these numbers for what we currently have for next year.
Yeah, I would, I would tell you, Chad, if we're using any funds for, I mean, you could commit fund balance now to the police station. We've already committed three million out of the community improvement fund for the new police facility, but we could always tap into any of the excess fund balance as well. Has Council may see fit for helping to fund the police facility? I don't know if we'd want to necessarily have it as a actual tranche within our working capital commit, or I'm sorry, within our committed fund balance, but it definitely could fit within a component of it, within the other, other category, yeah. Something we'll definitely have to talk about.
Hey, Andy, when I read over this, you know, a couple of questions I had, well, first, I appreciate bringing it up and talking about particularly the levy stabilization. And, you know, I think that one, you really do need a percentage tied to it because, you know, every year, like one percent, if we wanted to dedicate potentially up to a percentage, then, you know, that fluctuates how much that amount's going to be based on our budget for that year. So I think that one really needs a percentage tied to it. The emergency fund, though, I kind of wondered if just a dollar amount might be sufficient for that, and not saying what that might be, if it's half a million, six hundred thousand, kind of close to what you have here, but. And then the other, since that's, I know you've mentioned other one time possibly, but that kind of goes into even what Chad mentioned about the PD, and, you know, with that, since it's a smaller amount, would it be better just to leave that in the unrestricted amount, at least for the time being, until that, the police station piece gets worked through and not really knowing what might come next, next year, you know, with maybe some of the state funding that we might see, or if that might be helpful, so. That was just the kind of thoughts I had, and as far as the levy stabilization, you know, it'd be nice to have a maximum amount per year that could go, you know, towards that, and then have a minimum level, and then if you follow through that, like you mentioned, how would it get replenished? You know, if it's through the community improvement fund, or that would seem to be a, a good source for that since, you know, that's leftover bonding money, and again, that would be a, I think, an appropriate source to replenish that as well as, like we've done, you know, in the past. You mentioned that other five hundred thousand that we transferred in. But otherwise, I think it's a good start, and I appreciate you initiating the conversations.
Sure. Like I said, I think, you know, important thing for us is just to have that sense, you know, we don't necessarily need to know right this moment, but if you want to spend a little bit of thought, you know, kind of like Steve noted, that whether it's percentages or the flat dollar amounts, you know, we've, we've identified, you know, public emergency fund, levy, levy stabilization. Kind of like Steve noted, that whether it's percentages or the flat dollar amounts, you know, we've we've identified, you know, public emergency fund, levy levy stabilization fund, is there something else out there? That we kind of have some of those, what you guys are thinking about from a policy standpoint, so then we can kind of. Start putting that together and like I said, we'll we'll look to have a workshop probably. End of January, first part of February, we can, you know, dive into some of these and a little bit more detail and kind of. Put something to paper for you guys to look at and consider, but we wanted to make sure. That there was an opportunity for you guys at least get us some feedback upfront, so we kind of know. You know, where to at least start from, so.
Kind of curious, you know, like you mentioned, you have to have a. In the policy, you know, what these things can be used for and looking on the auditor's website, it. You know, mentioned that too, where you can't just say it's an emergency fund, that's not enough, that you have to. You know, specify what types of things it could be used for, so. How how specific does that need to be? Is it, can it still be general? Somewhat, because obviously there's a lot of different types of potential emergencies.
Yeah, you know, I see us, if we look at something like a public emergency, you look at, you know, if you want to put some some, you know, definitions that be. Things like natural disasters. You know, I think you could throw in there economic downturn and we, I think we looked at a couple, Andy, that maybe had some a little bit more definitions on on the what that. That detailed, but yeah, I I would agree, Steve, you're going to have to, I don't think it needs to be. You know. Two million for a flood that destroys X amount of dollars, I think you just kind of simply know that, you know, natural disasters or whatever that may that may come up.
Thing that Andy had mentioned about the debt, you know, that. Would that be considered potentially an emergency if you couldn't make a debt payment for some reason?
Yeah, I think at that point, any fund balances is in play if we have to make debt payments. Our other alternative is to raise our tax land meetings if we have to make. Debt payments, that's ultimately what backs all our debt is our ability to raise taxes and levy taxes. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's it. Again, I just hope the stabilization fund. Gets established like we did this time, we paid for the. Compensation plan, you know, there could have been like some of that IT work that. It's not a recurring cost, I think that's. Would be the big driver differentiation where. You know, maybe it's our community survey that we only do five years or this compensation study that's every five years or. You know. Potentially other things, but to have. Something that another source, just like we have transfer money that helps pay for things here would be a way. To pay for some of those non-recurring, non-growing inflationary growing costs. To take that out of. The general property tax piece of it. That's it.
Thanks, Andy, I think we got some good direction and I kind of where to go from here, appreciate that, so.
Thanks, guys, for all that work. We'll jump back to the public hearing, review the revisions to the Hutchinson City Charter as proposed by Hutchinson Charter Commission.
Mayor and Council Attorney Sabora will be addressing you regarding this this issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So by way of background, the Hutchinson City Charter has provisions about who can serve on the Hutchinson. Utilities Commission and currently under current language in the. Charter, only a registered voter can serve on the Utilities Commission. Over the past several years, like many of our boards and commissions, the city is having a hard time getting qualified candidates to serve on. On the boards and the Hutchinson Utility Utilities Commission is. Kind of in the same boat, they're having a difficult time finding qualified candidates that are willing to serve on the Utilities Commission. And going back a number of years, they've talked about ways that they might be able to increase the pool of candidates. That could serve as members of the Utilities Commission and a solution that they had arrived at. Was having one member of the Utilities Commission be. A business owner and a rate payer in the city of Hutchinson while still allowing that person to reside outside of the city limits. I think it was just about a year ago or so now that the utilities, pardon me, that the Charter Commission first talked about. Changing the charter to. Enact these proposed or this proposed idea from the Utilities Commission. They came up with some language, was presented in front of the Utilities Commission early in two thousand twenty. They tweaked the language a little bit. And because of the COVID pandemic, it took a while for it to come back to. The Charter Commission, but the Charter Commission did meet this fall. They are making a recommendation that the city council enacted ordinance that would. Amend the charter in these two ways, one. To allow a non-resident business owner that's also a rate payer of the utility. To serve on the Utilities Commission. And then tweaking some language later on in the charter that currently disqualifies someone. From being a commissioner if they're not a resident and has proposed that that section of the charter be changed. To basically say that if a person fails to meet the qualifications from which they were appointed to the Utilities Commission. That they would be disqualified from office. So the, pardon me, the Charter Commission forwarded a recommendation to the city. In November, we're having this public hearing because the state law dealing with. Charter Commission changes, pardon me, charter changes requires there to be a public hearing. And so I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. About the proposed changes, I'm not seeing anyone in the audience. Here to address the changes, and I don't know if Matt has received any comment from the public outside of tonight's meeting, but. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, Mark, just to clarify, it's just. One person. May be a property, non-resident property owner.
Right, you're you're exactly right, Steve, after some discussion. And some suggestions from city council members. Right, that point is clarified in the proposed change and only one of the Utilities Commissioners can meet this non-resident requirement. So there wouldn't be any concern about all five of them. Not living in the city.
And there's no requirement that there is a non-resident, it just opens up that opportunity or possibility.
It it does, and I guess I should have touched on that, the Utilities Commission does a really good job. They have developed a matrix. Which they try to get people from a cross-section of community members to serve on the commission. Either from various industries, professions, et cetera. To try to have a good balance to that. Board. And you're absolutely right, I mean, this just opens up that pool of candidates, there's no requirement that someone. Fit in this niche, so to speak. It just gives the Utilities Commission another opportunity to appoint someone.
Mark, in past history, we did lose a couple of good commissioners that. Lacked it to move outside the city limits, but still. Actually had a business in town, correct?
Right, you're exactly right, and I think that really gave the spark to the idea of amending the charter in this way. So. If it meets with the council's approval, really the only action tonight after you close the public hearing would be. To. Approve of the recommendation made of the Charter Commission. And then. Set an ordinance first reading for the first meeting in two thousand twenty one, which I believe is January twelfth.
And make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to close the public hearing. Roll call, Chad.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Mary. Dave.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Open it up for a public comment.
You just closed a public hearing, Gary, you just closed a public hearing, so.
Harry.
You'd be looking to have a motion to basically accept the recommendations and. And call for a first reading of an ordinance at your. Jan- yeah, January twelfth city council meeting.
I'd make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary. Roll call, Mary.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
This is real circus, but I.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Council.
Uh, no unfinished business, new business. We got to keep it light, Chad, you know. New business, resolution number one, five, two, five, six, resolution adopting two thousand twenty one seasonal temporary compensation plan.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is one of our resolutions, this is regarding. As a resolution notes, our seasonal temporary compensation plan that does take into account recent. Changes or upcoming changes in regards to to minimum wage, so we'd ask that you consider adopting the resolution.
I think that since it's Steve's last meeting, he should make all the rest of these procedural motions, just, you know, for his last party.
That 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 should, yeah, I agree.
I am the bit spender, you know, so. We can do that.
Have a motion by Steve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, roll call, Chad.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Resolution number one, five, two, six, one, resolution adopting two thousand twenty one. Compensation plan and position classification table and pay grid.
Mayor and Council, once again, this is another annual resolution, this essentially adopts our our payment plan for. Full-time and regular employees, the one change from from last year's plan to this year's plan is that there was a two percent. Shift in the in the grid and just for clarification purposes, that doesn't mean that everyone. Receives a two percent wage adjustment, that just simply means that our. Our width, our depth, or whatever you want to call it, of our our pay system shifts two grades to account for for market adjustments. Employees are still obviously compensated based off of their performance evaluation, but. The wage committee have did review, did meet and didn't make that recommendation, and I guess staff would. Ask you to consider approving the. Twenty twenty one compensation plan and classification table and pay grid.
Matt, I just want, was curious, were there any reclassifications, you know, for next year, or I know there's that opportunity where staff can do it.
Yep, there was, yeah, there was none in this year's plan. Some of that was partially by design with knowing that we're heading out for a reclassification, or at least a look at a complete look at our system next year.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Roll call, Chad.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Resolution number one, five, two, four, three, resolution adopting fee schedule.
Once again, this is another one of our annual resolutions, it takes into account the the set fees. Throughout the city, the proposed changes for next year have been identified. Within the are noted in red on the plan. You know, the one I I thought, as I talked with staff, you know, this would probably be the best time to bring this up. You know, and I think I might have noted this in a in an email to the council a couple of months ago or a month ago is. If there's any this, any thought on changing any of our business-related. Licenses, specifically the liquor license fee. Now, I hadn't heard back from anybody, I don't know. You know, some cities have done that with the shutdowns and the closures. We have not made any changes to our our fee schedule. But, you know, that was one of the fees that we did partially refund in in two thousand twenty, and so I thought. If there's any desire to do something, that would probably be the best time to to do that, even though we did approve all the. The license fees. You know, I just wanted to throw that out there.
For clarification, did you just prorate it based on how long they were able to sell alcohol, or what did we do?
Yeah, basically that was, we, I think we had taken into account the the months that they were closed down and then. Kind of when they were able to reopen and then close back down and we used a formula to try to. Try to make it as fair across the board as as we possibly could.
I don't know, I would think that'd be a good idea to do again if it doesn't screw anything up too much.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's. As we all know, I mean, fees aren't a significant portion of, you know, of our our fund ba- of our general fund revenue. My general thought with where we're at right now and maybe even looking back at what we did, you know, last year is that. If you were to prove the fee schedule, I would maybe do it and then just say, you know, liquor licenses are fifty percent of. For twenty twenty one of what's listed, however you want to. Look at doing that, whatever that that percentage is or, yeah, along those lines.
I think it's a good idea, I think everybody could use a break.
I think we should use the formula that we did last time, don't don't, or some kind of, you know. We, because we don't really know how long this is going to have be shut down either, and we could, you know. He could move it out again, so. I mean, I I don't know, that's my thought, just to have some kind of formula in place for how long it, how long they're 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 closed down.
Sure. Steve, you're muted, sorry.
Thank you. How did that actually work, you know, have we prorated anything already? I mean, they were closed previously. And now they're closed again, so. Has that proration already been done? This year?
Are you talking about for the for the payments that went out? This, yeah, I mean, we, I think we made the payments prior to this. Last shutdown.
Right.
Yeah, so when they renew this time of year, they pay, they pay their license in full, and so I think we issued checks in probably November, just before. So I would say it probably doesn't include the month of December that they've been shut down in their. In their refund, so. I mean, we can easily do our refund formula. But part of the reason I brought it up now because I thought, you know, if if we're looking just to give them a discount, I'd rather just. The easier thing for us. Is just to simply say, you know, fees are. A certain percentage of what's listed and just leave it at that for the full year, I mean.
My gut would tell me like forty percent off or fifty percent off would get them close to where they're going to be, you know, I I can't see them opening up bars. In the next two months, I don't know, I mean, that's what my gut tells me.
Yeah. Go ahead, sorry, Steve, go ahead, so.
Yeah, I I agree with that, Chad, I like the fifty percent, I mean, even if. If, you know, they open up sooner and, you know, the proration might have. Provided us a little bit more money, that it doesn't matter, you know, they've.
Yeah, I agree, fifty percent is fine, you know, like, I mean, they're they're not doing well, even if they are opening up and people aren't going to rush back to the wall, some people aren't going to rush back to the bars. In the same rate that they did, so I I feel comfortable with fifty.
I'm comfortable with fifty also.
Need a motion for that, Matt, as part of the accepting?
Yeah, I would say when you guys accept the the fee schedule, that you just do that and just note that, you know, liquor license fees would be. Would be charged at fifty percent as listed within the resolution. would be charged at fifty percent as listed within the resolution.
I'll make that.
I'll second it. Motion by Mary, second by myself to, uh, adopt a fee schedule with, uh, liquor license being fifty percent. Correct, Matt?
Yep, correct, as what's listed in the fee schedule. And I would know it's for twenty twenty-one, so.
All right, for twenty twenty-one fee. Uh, roll call, Chad.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh. Gary?
Go ahead, Steve.
With that, knowing, you know, the restrictions now in November and December, and these are typically some of the busiest months, you know, for restaurants, or, can we, is it too much of a hassle that do a pro- an additional proration, um, for those businesses, just a reimbursement of some kind?
Steve, we can look at it, um, cause we may, we may have included December in that, I'm, just depending on what the timing was, so we can at least look at it, and if there's a need to adjust, we can make that adjustment, you guys had already authorized that prorated for twenty twenty, so we'll go back and take a look at that, so.
All right, moving on. Uh, resolution number one, five, two, five, zero, resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-one general fund ba- fund budget.
The mayor and counsel, um, I'm gonna hand it over to finance director Andy Reed, he'll probably walk you guys through the next, uh, various set of, uh, of resolutions, uh, looking to adopt the budget and tax levy for next year.
Hey, good evening again, guys, um, yeah, basically what we have in front of you tonight for the general fund, we have two options, option one is basically what Matt Yannick presented at the truth and taxation meeting with one minor expense reduction, and that's due to the workers' compensation rates, we are renewing our policy effective January first, and we just got word back from the league that, um, our rates are actually gonna stay flat, uh, or close to it, might actually be a decrease, so I budgeted for flat rates, which brought the expenditure, uh, down about ten thousand, and then we added, I think, about twenty-five thousand for some additional, um, copier cost, I believe it was, so, it's pretty close to what the T M T meeting was, with about a seventy-five hundred dollar decrease in expenditures. And then option two is essentially that same budget, however, uh, we added twenty thousand of additional expenditure for the vehicle and equipment funding. So I'll go through the, uh, first option, uh, for the budget, and then we'll go through the second one after that, uh, but the budget is basically balanced with a two point nine percent tax levy increase, our expenditures and revenues both increased by about one point seven percent over the twenty twenty budget, uh, we did see some increases in some inter- uh, enterprise fund transfers, eighty thousand dollars, fifty of that from the liquor fund, and thirty thousand from the water and wastewater funds combined. Self-insurance fund transfer was decreased by twenty-three thousand as we phase out that funding of our HSA contributions. And then we did budget for fund balance, using forty thousand dollars of fund balance within our revenue section there, and that is to address two projects in the year, uh, twenty thousand for some improvements at the police training site, and that's using some drug forfeiture monies, uh, that we actually have committed within our general fund balance, and then twenty thousand for a compensation study. And that compensation study expense can be found under the services and charges, uh, line item, and the police training site, twenty thousand can be found under the capital outweigh in the expenditures. So on the expenditure side, uh, most expenditures kept very, fairly flat, you can see our wages and benefits, which is our biggest category, uh, had less than a one percent increase, which is incredible, and a lot of that is due to our health insurance premium staying flat, and then in addition to that, we had some retirements and employee turnover, that's, that helped our, uh, budget this year. And then down in the miscellaneous expense, we have that open or tax abatement, that dropped from forty-five thousand last year to thirty thousand in twenty-one, and that's simply due to a reduction in open source taxable market value, uh, that was done by the county, um, and then the vehicle equipment funding, that's also in the miscellaneous expense line item, we did increase that by thirty thousand already, so we have a total funding of three hundred and five thousand, and we last increased that funding back in two thousand nineteen by fifty thousand. So that's, uh, budget option number one, option two is essentially the same as I stated earlier with the additional twenty thousand increase for vehicle funding. So we'll look at our tax impact, both budgetary options are in the middle highlighted, the first budget option highlighted blue, and the second option highlighted green. You can see, starting with the, with option one, we have our two point nine percent levy increase, which equates to a two percent overall levy increase, and that would bring our tax rate down by about two point eight six percent, and then for the median home value of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, they would see approximately a nineteen dollar city tax increase, if their valuations actually increase as, as assumed here. You can see that, as, as we probably talked about earlier, the tax capacity increase is estimated to increase six point four percent, that's an estimate from the county, that's essentially offsetting the increase in the home value change of six point four. So obviously, if a resident home value doesn't increase, uh, to the tune of six point four, like in this analysis, they would see less of a tax increase. So under option two highlighted in green, our tax levy for the general fund would increase from two point nine percent to three point three, bringing our overall tax levy increase to a two point three percent, and our tax rate would decrease by two point six nine percent, and then for the median home, home value, they would see, uh, city tax increase of about twenty-two dollars, so very minor impact between the two, uh, budgetary items, uh, or two budget options that are presented to you tonight. Um, and just a side note, you know, the preliminary tax levies that, that we certify in September, um, just to give you some context here, the school certified their preliminary at four percent, or four point seven five percent, and their final came in at two percent. The county preliminary was at five percent, and their final is coming at two and a half percent. And then our city levy was at three point nine percent, and we're either gonna be at two percent or two point three percent, depending on which budget we choose tonight, so, um, the good news for taxpayers, I guess, is that they're gonna see quite a big drop in their, their tax bill compared to what they saw in the November notices, based on the preliminary levies. Um, so if we go on to my last slide here, our LGA history, you can see that for twenty twenty-one, we're certified to receive just an increase of just under seventy thousand. And at this point, we've plugged that entire increase into our capital projects fund, rather than into our general fund, and that was mainly an assumption we did earlier in the year, just based on some uncertainty at the state level with their budget and, uh, possible uncertainty with LGA in the future, and that's something we can always re- uh, renew and discuss for the twenty twenty-two budget, if we wanna move some of that LGA around, if we do in fact receive that increase. So at this point, I'll open it up to discussion on the budget, and, uh, just remind you, we do need to approve one of the two budgets that's presented to you tonight.
Well, I'll start, I guess, I like option two, again, just, you know, to put a little bit more money into, uh, the fleet, especially the large fleet purchases, and I think, and, you know, again, from my mind, it by itself, it's not a lot of money, obviously, but, you know, my thought was, if the council would make a commitment going forward to increase that amount ten thousand dollars a year, which for this year would be like point one three percent. So it's not a huge change, but over time, incrementally, it'll start adding up and start closing that gap, or at least reducing other debt that's needed, you know, to, um, to go into to purchase those larger pieces of equipment. And I know, I think Matt and Andy, you know, would that be helpful if the council did give some direction that way uh, for you as you're looking at future budgets, um, going forward?
Yeah, obviously, it does, I mean, it helps us when we get into the preliminary stages, and, and obviously, I think you all know that, we can't bind future councils, but at least allows us to start, you know, closing that gap with an, with a mechanism, we've highlighted that, I think, probably at least the last four years of the budgeting process that Andy and I have done, that, you know, we're slowly, we are slowly bringing that gap down, but there's still a need, and this obviously will go a long way in helping that, and if there's a desire to continue to do that, that at least helps us when we get into next year's um, budgeting for twenty twenty-two, when we present those preliminaries, or at least know that, that's the route we need to be looking at, so.
I also like option two. I just think it is time that we start putting, setting that money aside, using it for our fleet.
Andy, can you maybe scroll up, just so they can have a good comparison there on those? Thanks. So really, what we're looking for the council is obviously a, a motion to, um, approve resolution one, five, two, five, zero, and when you make that motion, it'd be with either option two A or two B.
I'll make a motion for two B.
Let's think of that. Gary, I'm mute.
Sorry. Uh, it's motion by Steve, second by Dave to approve, uh, the resolution with option two B. Is there any other discussion on it? It's not, roll call, Chad?
Aye.
Dave? Dave?
Dave, you're muting yourself.
Yeah, I see that, no, I shouldn't have already, that's called technology, uh, aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Hi, it'll be nice when we can go back, or you guys can go back.
Aye, motion carries. Um, resolution number one, five, two, five, one, resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-one general fund and debt service final tax levies.
All right, thank you, mayor, um, based on the last agenda item, selecting option number two for our general fund budget, that translates into using option two for our, uh, final tax levy for the general fund and our debt service funds. So, the resolution in front of you tonight includes uh, general fund levy, uh, five million, four hundred thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine. We have our tax abatement of thirty thousand, which is actually part of our general fund, and then we have our debt, uh, debt levy of two point two million, giving us a total tax levy of seven million, six hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So I ask, uh, I ask you to approve resolution one, five, two, five, one, setting our two thousand twenty-one general fund and debt tax levy.
And, and Andy, that, that, that equals an overall tax levy increase of two point three percent, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution one, five, two, five, one.
I second it.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve. Andy, the other discussion on it? If not, roll call, Chad?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Hi.
Aye, motion carries. Matt, can we do, um, A through F on one motion?
Yep, if that's the desire of this city council, you sure can.
Is that all right with the rest of the council? All righty, we have resolution num- these are all, uh, two thousand twenty-one enterprise fund ba- fund budgets. Uh, we have resolution number one, five, two, four, four, resolution approving the two thousand twenty-one liquor fund budget, and resolution number one, five, two, four, five, resolution approving two thousand twenty-one water fund budget, and resolution number one, five, two, four, six, resolution approving the two thousand twenty-one wastewater fund budget, and resolution number one, five, two, four, seven, resolution approving the two thousand twenty-one storm water fund budget, and resolution number one, five, two, four, eight, resolution approving the two thousand twenty-one refuge fund budget, and resolution number one, five, two, four, nine, resolution approving the two thousand twenty-one compost fund budget.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, yes, uh, all these enterprise fund budgets, I'll go through in kind of a summary format, and then if you have any questions at the end, I can certainly address those, but starting with the liquor fund, our total revenues are budgeted to increase five point two percent, our expenditures are up four point one percent, we have a net loss of just under thirty-six thousand, but a positive cash flow of forty-one thousand. Just some side notes, the debt to the water and wastewater funds was fully repaid in two thousand and twenty, so that'll save the liquor fund approximately a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars each year going forward. We did increase the general fund transfer by fifty thousand, so that liquor fund is now sending five hundred and fifty thousand over to the general fund each year, and then we'll also start setting some cash aside for future building maintenance and capital improvements that, uh, may be needed at the facility. In the water fund, our revenues are down two point two percent, while our expenditures are up two percent. Our net loss is just under one point six five million, and we have a negative cash flow of about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and that's simply due to some higher than usual capital expenditures. Uh, no water rate increases, uh, last increase was in two thousand and eleven. The large capital expenditure for the year is to upgrade our SCADA system, and that's take that seven hundred thousand, and then we did increase our transfer to the general fund by ten thousand, uh, to a total of seventy thousand. The wastewater fund, our total revenues are up three point four percent, expenditures are up twenty-six point one percent, we have a net loss of just over two point five million, and a negative cash flow of uh, about one point three million, again, uh, those losses and cash flows are due to some higher than usual capital expenditures. Like the water fund, we didn't have any rate increases for twenty twenty-one for wastewater, our last increase was two thousand and eleven. Major capital expenditures for the year are the headworks project and upgrading our SCADA system. And then our transfer to the general fund was increased by twenty thousand, to a total of eighty thousand. And over in the stormwater fund, total revenues are up three point six percent, that's mainly driven by a rate increase of three percent for our users. Our expenditures are up twenty-four point one percent. We have a net loss of just over seven hundred and seven thousand, and a negative cash flow of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and again, that's due to some higher than usual capital expenditures. So again, we did raise our stormwater fees three percent, and our capital expenditures are higher than normal as we look to complete our, our Linden Park Pond project by connecting the streets on the west side of the pond, to that big retention pond. Refuge fund. Refuge fund, our revenues are up two point four percent, while our expenditures are up fifty-two point four percent. Our net loss is just under eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, while we have a negative cash flow of about seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Again, those losses are due to some high capital expenditures. We didn't have any rate increase for refuse in the year, our last increase was in two thousand and eight. And our capital expenditures are, are high this year, simply because we're, at this point, we're budgeting for a potential six hundred and ten thousand dollar investment into changing our source separated process. And then our annual transfer of fifty-five thousand to the tree- And then our annual transfer of fifty-five thousand to the tree disease and mitigation fund continues to come out of this refuse fund. And the compost fund, total revenues are down four percent. Expenditures are down five point two percent. We have a net loss of just under six hundred and forty thousand. Negative cash flow of two hundred and ninety thousand. And again, that's due to high capital expenditures. And then on the revenue side, uh, we're down about a hundred and seventy-five thousand on our bulk sales, and that's due to our depleted bitcon inventory. We hope to crush bitcon in in two thousand twenty-one, possibly early twenty twenty-two, but it all depends on. How much raw product we get from street projects. And then just a note, our our wood grinder that we purchased five years ago, the debt on that's gonna fall off after two thousand twenty-one, and that'll save the compost fund eighty-eight thousand. Uh, dollars per year starting in two thousand twenty-two. And the transfer to the general fund remains at a hundred and ten thousand. Um, so I know we we see a lot of these large. Uh, net losses and negative cash flows, but these funds do have healthy cash balances. It allows us to make these large capital improvements over the next several years, it could because our facilities are aging. Um, but the the transfers these enterprise funds make into the general fund, total eight hundred and ten thousand. And if we didn't have these enterprise funds, that would be about a fifteen point five percent tax levy increase to make up that revenue. And that would be about a hundred dollar uh per year tax increase to the median home value. So definitely adding value to um to the city. Um, really only had the one rate increase in the stormwater. We've held the other rates flat for several years, so all these, all these enterprise funds are performing well and uh. Doing good for the city. So at that, with that said, I'll open it up for discussion and any questions that you may have, and then I'll ask that you approve all the budgets in one motion, please.
Andy, I was looking back, you know, when we had our enterprise workshop. And in the water fund, the capital outlay then was a couple hundred thousand dollars less. Was the SCADA project, did that just come in a little higher than what was anticipated at that time?
Yeah, I think the SCADA was actually escalated um to two thousand twenty-one. I think it was maybe take for two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three, but yeah, the cost did go up on that as well.
Any other questions for Andy? Entertain a motion to approve the all the resolutions?
I'll make that a motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion on it? If not, roll call, Chad?
Aight.
Dave?
Aight.
Mary?
Aight.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh, resolution number one five two five two, resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-one H R A final tax levy.
Alright, we're getting close to the end here. Um, we have our H R A tax levy. They have a statutory levy limit for two thousand twenty-one. At two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. However, the H R A, H R A board only is requesting two hundred thousand for their levy. And that requested levy amount represents a three point six percent increase over the two thousand twenty levy. So with that, if there are no questions, I ask that you approve the final two thousand twenty-one H R A tax levy at two hundred thousand.
Make that a motion. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you.
I'll I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Steve to approve uh the H R A tax levy. Discussion on it? Not roll call, uh, Chad?
Aight.
Dave?
Aight.
Mary?
Aight.
Steve?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh, resolution number one five two five three, resolution adopting the two thousand. That should be twenty-one, right? Instead of, it says twenty, two thousand twenty, but should be two thousand twenty-one E D A final tax levy?
Correct.
Correct. Alright, uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, the E D A, similar to the H R A, is subject to a statutory levy limit by the state. And that statutory limit's based on uh estimated market value uh within the city. And for two thousand twenty-one, their limit is two hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's the amount that the E D A board is requesting for their levy. It represents a five point nine percent increase over their twenty twenty levy. So with that, if there's no questions, I ask that you approve setting the final two thousand twenty-one E D A tax levy at two hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the E D A tax levy. Any other discussion on it? Not, uh, Chad?
Aight.
Dave?
Aight.
Mary?
Aight.
Steve?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh. The five-year capital improvement plan.
Alright, um, yeah, what what you have in front of you tonight did have some changes from what you last saw. Uh, mid-December, the facility committee met. Um, the main goal was to review an opportunity to take advantage of. Of repaving the civic arena and uh rec- recreation building parking lot. As you know, this last fall with the stormwater project, they had to rip up some of that parking lot, and the plan is to repave that portion. In two thousand twenty-one, so the facility committee saw this as an opportunity to redo that whole parking lot. Uh, which was slated for two thousand twenty-three, I believe. Um, so we find, we we think there will be some efficiencies to. Tail this project on with the with the roadway projects that are bid out for next year. And then what we would end up doing is pushing back this civic arena roof and wall improvement project that was originally slated for two thousand twenty-one. We would move that back to two thousand twenty-two. And and that would also give us the benefit of of building up some fund balance to finance that civic arena roof project, just simply because the costs were starting to uh creep up on us. Um, so other than that, uh, the facility committee had to actually push some other projects each year back for uh projects back a year. Uh, to make this all work. So other than that, there weren't any other changes than what the facility committee uh recommended. Um, so at that, unless you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to to answer what you have.
Hi, Andy, can you remind me how the LED streetlight retrofits are being done? Is that just as. Bulbs need to be replaced, or are they doing it by sections? I know there every fi- every year, there's so much money set aside for that.
Yeah, so far it's just been dealt with within our annual roadway projects. As we redo streets, we obviously replace the streetlights with LED. And then as um Hutch Utilities is replacing lights or doing maintenance, I believe. Um, I don't believe they're changing them out to LED at this point. But the plan is to start and hopefully here in two thousand twenty-one, because this does have an impact on our general fund budget. We're already seeing the savings from LED lights that have been installed i- in our roadway projects. I think our. Our annual cost to Hutch Utilities went down about thirteen thousand for next year's budget. So we're seeing the benefits, and we need to just keep taking it a next next step further by. Uh, scheduling replacements of of the other lights. And there's been discussions uh with city staff on how to do that. I believe it's a seven-year plan we've identified. And it's just a matter now of kind of hammering out the the financing sources. Of that, which would likely come from a combination of sources. We have our miscellaneous infrastructure. Uh, funds that Public Works oversees, and then we have the undesignated funds within uh within the Capital Projects Fund. So there's there's ways to get it done, but this should be a priority for us. Uh, just simply because of the savings we'll see within our general fund budget.
And then uh another question was, you know, there's a storage building at Hats that's gonna be scheduled, and that's like two and a half million, two point seven million. And then some fuel site upgrades or work, but there's a grant of some kind that apparently would pay for that?
Well, I I think the state was hoping to to get that cold storage building wrapped within the state's bonding bill. And that didn't happen this year, obviously, but uh I think they're hopeful for a future year. And the fuel, the fuel upgrades, I think they can manage that one with the fund balance they have on hand. I'd have to double check on that, but they, uh, we do have a pretty healthy fund balance within that hats fund.
The last one, that question I had, and I didn't see it in the stormwater portion, but. I was thinking that I had heard that. There was gonna be some looking at maybe a pond over in that area by Applebee's and Ridgewater College. Do you remember that? Or um, at least their staff was gonna be looking at it, and I. I only ask, I just kind of wondered, you know, really if that's something that the city should do, so just wanted to. Ask that or put that out there, you know, since it's really more private or non-city, yeah.
Andy, uh, Ken can answer maybe that question for you, so.
Yeah, I I think it's on Steve to answer your question. It is on our our radar to do a study. Uh, obviously, we need to have a willing partner with uh. The college, Minskew in particular. So, you know, it's been talked about for many, many years. Uh, it'd be nice to get it done. I think we need to study it, do some hydraulic analysis, and then uh approach Minskew. Uh, I think the one that's probably more pressing from a regional pond standpoint is the the Michigan Street Hilltop area. Uh, we're gonna start to dig into that in the next few years, uh, study that, lay that out. Uh, talk to the property owner where we would uh look to procure the land to place that pond prior to us. Uh, getting into uh the Hilltop neighborhood, roadways, and Michigan Street reconstruction towards the end of the five-year C I P.
Thanks. Yeah, I did see that one was on there, and that's been talked about. So. That's it for me.
Entertain a motion for to approve the five-year improvement plan?
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve. Any other discussion? Roll call, Chad?
Aight.
Dave?
Aight.
Mary?
Aight.
Steve?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Uh, setting date for the City Administrator Annual Performance Review.
I'm here in council. This is something that we do every day, pardon me, every. Sounds about right, every day. Hopefully something we don't do every day. And of course, this is all in the assumption that you actually reappoint Matt on January fourth. Um, but Brenda has asked that, uh, we set the date for Matt's review. Traditionally, we've done it. The second meeting in January, we've set it for four o'clock that afternoon before the council meeting. Um, so I'd be looking for you to set that as a meeting date anytime.
I'll make a motion to set that meeting at four o'clock that day.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to set that uh annual. Reform, performance review. Uh. Roll call, Chad?
Aight, and just for clarification, that's on the twenty-sixth, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Dave?
Aight.
Mary?
Aight.
Steve?
Well, I don't know. Hi.
Hi. Motion carries.
So why we waited to the very last meeting of the year to give Steve that opportunity, so, yeah.
Well, maybe maybe Steve could send the email with his grievances, kind of like Festivus style, um, as a final farewell.
Governance, we have a planning commission minutes from October twentieth, two thousand twenty. We have Hutch Utilities Commission Minutes from October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. We have the Hutchinson-Housen Reef Development Authority Board Minutes from November seventeenth, two thousand twenty. We have the City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Report for November two thousand twenty. Uh, Chief Jefferson's still here?
Yes, he is.
Alrighty, I asked him to give us a little. Talk about the animal licensing, because it's coming up for first of the year again. Chief Jefferson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as the mayor alluded to, he had asked me to speak about uh pet licenses. Um, in the renewing or um actually acquiring for the first time. Um, so. Guess there's really not much to talk about other than uh the fee is ten dollars. Um, and actually, by city ordinance, any. Animal that's kept as a pet is technically supposed to have a pet license within the City of Hutchinson. Um, the ten dollar fee, we uh as a city waive that fee if your pet has been spayed or neutered. And then also if uh the pet has a microchip installed. Um, and I would say probably at this point of the ballgame, the majority of the pets that we license uh that fee is waived. Um, I would say one of the benefits of having your pet licensed, if you're sitting at home wondering, why would I do that? Um, is the potential to return your pet home safely with as little cost uh as possible to you. Uh, if your do- or dog, cat, or what have you happens to get away from you. Um, if we find uh a stray animal and it does have a uh license attached to it, uh, our first. Our first option is to try to get a hold of the owner by the record that we have on the pet license, and we will return the animal home versus bringing it to the uh animal impound. Once the animal's at the impound, if if we're not able to find the owner, then there are some significant fees that. The uh, the owner of the animal will incur as a result of that, uh, an impound fee and a kennel fee and those types of things. So even on a one-day impound, it could save the property owner a hundred dollars uh in excess of a hundred dollars by just having that pet license attached. Any questions regarding that?
No, thank you very much, Chief Jefferson. Do you have anything else for us?
I see Dave turned his mic on. Did you have a question?
I do. How are you doing with the uh D N R and the turkeys?
Great question. So, um. Our chief turkey catcher is uh had been out of work for the last week and a half. We just recently um. Received our permits, so we do have our permits, and we have a plan. So now it's just time to implement that plan. Um, and we hope to do that, probably will, obviously not this week, but um either next week or the week after.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. If nobody else has anything else to say, I just uh want to express my gratitude to to uh Councilmember Cook for his years of service to the city.
Thanks, you too.
Uh. Is uh, can't have anything for us?
Yep, he's got one thing for you.
Actually, two things, yeah. Obviously, Merry Christmas to everyone, so uh. And then, uh, secondly, and more importantly, probably, yeah, like Tom said, yeah, thanks to Steve and Steve's service to the the city for many years, obviously, uh. Uh, I've been working with Steve since basically day one, when I got here, uh, in uh late two thousand four. So, yeah, we've worked on a lot of things together. We've gone back and forth on a few things, obviously, through the years, but uh, no, Steve's a great advocate for this, advocate for the city and uh. Always supported his uh or always appreciated his support of uh Public Works and engineering projects and improvements and. Understanding of our assessment policy and such, so. and understanding of our assessment policy and such, so thanks, Steve.
Hey Kent, thank Kent, thanks and kind of a belated apologies with the roundabout it cash-wise. You know, just uh, I know that was one of those areas, but obviously it's worked out well and um, but I never wanted it to be personal. I hope you didn't take it that way. Really appreciate everything that you do and the whole staff, obviously. The city is so fortunate to have the staff that we do. Um, I was going to say that with Matt, but no, just uh wanted to share that with you too personally, so thanks.
Yep, appreciate it. Thanks, Steve.
If I get my hand to work right, I could hit the button better, but Matt, do we have any, anyone else out there?
Mark City actually has something to say tonight, so.
Oh, is is John Olson still there? I've seen him before. Oh, Mark has something, okay.
Yeah, you're stuck with me.
Yep.
Great, uh, just continuing on, I had first wanted to say thank you so much to Steve for uh all those years of service to the City of Hutchinson. Really appreciate his leadership and willingness to try some new ideas over the years. And um, again, just as Kent had said, great advocate and supporter for the City of Hutchinson throughout his was it thirteen years of service, fourteen? Um, but again, thank you for everything. I wish you the best of luck in your new stage of life. Congratulations on your retirement and uh wish you the best. And uh, secondly, just Merry Christmas to everyone. That's it.
Thanks, Mark.
Chad, let's start with you tonight.
Well, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, first of all, and and Steve, I'd like to thank you for your service um over the years. I've wanted to strangle you a handle handful of times over the years, but in in general, we always get along at the end of the day. And we've probably sat in over two hundred council meetings together, so we've had a lot of time together, so over the years. So uh, I always appreciate your passion and uh everything you brought to the table, so um thanks for your service.
Thanks, Chad. Yeah, I know, there's been some times, I'm sure, so.
Thanks, Chad. Dave?
Just to share the sentiments of Merry Christmas to all and uh a huge thank you to Steve uh for your advocacy to the city. Congratulations and uh good luck in your endeavors.
Thanks, Dave.
Mary?
Well, wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, a healthy Christmas. Also, Steve, you've been great. I mean, it's been good, it's been fun. We've had our disagreements on things, but we always tend to agree to disagree. And and I think that's okay. Everyone needs to have their thoughts. You've served this city very well. We will miss you. Good luck. Happy retirement. Enjoy the grandchildren and have fun.
Thanks a lot, Mary. It's been good.
Thanks, Mary. Steve?
Oh, boy. Um, yeah, I guess just wanted to reiterate, uh I really appreciated my time. I appreciate the opportunity that the voters gave me, both as mayor and council members. You know, you look back at the things that have happened since two thousand and five and it's a hell of a list. So a lot of good things that have uh taken place. And you know, that's a testament to the councils then and through through right now. And same with city staff and uh I think goes back to the marketing and branding thing, we've got a great story to tell. And uh I hope that follows through and continues because Hutchinson's a great place to live, great place to work, start a business and um, and retire and even raise families. So um, I just, I know right now it's kind of challenging times, but that's not going to last. We've been through challenging times, you know, in the past too and come through our right. And I think it's just uh a testament to, you know, how everybody works together and the partnerships and the collaborations and the attachment that people have to Hutchinson. So um, just keep working on that and um the one thing I would say is I'm a little worried about downtown. You know, that was the whole thing with the State Theater to be a part of that. You think of our downtown plan and when we adopted that, we still had Econo Foods, we still had Shopko. Uh, now there's some other businesses like Zella's, you know, that isn't around. You know, those were some destination type businesses that helped us. And so, you know, I just encourage you to, you know, look at that Imagine Hutchinson Plan and try to adopt some of those things within that because one of the primary uh goals with that was to help bring other people into the community. Um, and then spur some other development downtown, so. Uh, other than that, Matt, I really appreciated working with you. Uh, been a great addition to the city and uh your leadership's been excellent in communication. And, you know, I really appreciate how, you know, you're willing to get out in the community and participate. And that just uh establishing relationships means everything. And uh you're really good at that and and working with staff. So um, just um, yeah, just thank you and thank you for putting up with all my questions over the years. And uh uh I just wish everybody the best. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Matt?
Well, thanks, Steve. I appreciate those comments. You know, Chad talked about wanting to strangle you. I I just pulled out this up here, so that's uh, it's gone on over the last couple of years. No, I always appreciate Steve, your, I do appreciate your passion for this community. I don't, I think sometimes that gets lost amongst the public is how much you truly care for Hutchinson. Even though like sometimes it might drive us insane a little bit, but I've appreciated that passion. I've appreciated even how you've challenged staff too. I think that helps us all um be better at at uh at what we do. And so I appreciate the fourteen years that that you've put into the city, um, to the work, to to the relationship that that we built overly over these last four years. Um, like I said, it's, I think it's made me a, hopefully it's made me a better administrator. Um, um, so I've appreciated that time. I said you've been, you've been great. Like I said, there's been times I want to pull my hair out, but at the end of the day, it makes us a better staff and makes us a better city. And and I've always appreciated that. You know, um, COVID's just really changed the way we've been able to do everything. Um, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to really celebrate Steve's years of service. But there's another member of our staff, um, Dolph Moon is retiring at the end of this year after having spent thirty-one years um here in Hutchinson, really kind of transforming the way our park system um has operated um the way it is. Really, you know, we went from a park and rec system and transitioned that into a park rec and community ed system, all under his leadership. And so we've got really thirty-one years of the work that he's put in to transform the way our park and rec system is to really become a regional attraction in that area. And it's quite unfortunate, we weren't able to really recognize him, you know, properly um through this time. And so I wanted to make sure that I at least did that in however manner I could tonight at the council meeting. So obviously, we'll be losing Steve and Dolph will be done at the end of, end of this year. I know both of them will still be in the community, but uh I wanted to make sure that both were acknowledged. I've enjoyed working with um both of them and, you know, I'll look forward to the new challenges. That's part of what happens as an administrator, especially every two years, you have changeover in the council and you have staff that retire. So I'm looking forward to what's coming up in the future. And then just with some business, just a reminder that offices are are closed um Thursday at noon and all day on Friday for Christmas. Um, then obviously we'll be closing again um next Friday, January first for the New Year's holiday. And then just another quick reminder that our organizational meeting will be uh Monday morning, January fourth at at nine A M. And with that, uh Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, I'll do my business first. I I got a little note on why I had Chief Jefferson talk about dog licensing. Uh, had a little story on Sunday. I was going to go ice fishing. I got in my car, I took off, Angela our dog out, and evidently Lola thought that she should come along with me. So unknowingly, she followed me all the way up to Bluffin Seven. So uh, yeah, she ran behind me and of course I didn't see her. So um, the nice police officer got her called and lo and behold, Lola got a ride back to our house with uh no cost to us. So it's very important to get a license. I, it's uh, you know, that uh just have to go down, take your vet papers down to the police station. They fill it all out, give you the license and uh save, save me some money, my Christmas money maybe, I don't know. But uh, the other thing, I was just wondering, uh, maybe at the dog park, if we could get some, maybe look at putting some lights up there? Because it's uh, there is no lights around there, so um, that's uh actually a request from the wife, so uh I said I'd bring that up. Uh, Steve, you know, something I I gotta, I gotta say, I I first, I gotta thank, thank my older brothers because they gave me thick skin, because uh I've learned to roll with the punches and, you know, uh yeah, I'm kind of a little less up here too from all the, all the things that go on. But uh, I I agree with Chad, uh, some days I just gotta shake my head and go, what the heck was he thinking? But, you know, uh, it is, it is good to be challenged because uh, you know, when when you get into a rut and you're thinking, okay, this is the way we've done it for years. And somebody comes along and says, hey, why don't you try it this way? Will it work? Maybe, maybe not, but uh it's, it's good to be challenged. So I'm glad that you were around to do that to all of us and uh makes us, makes it uh a better council to serve the city, you know, and and I think that's what you made us all do to look, look at outside the box a lot of times. So I want to thank you for that and congratulations. And I know uh kind of jealous of you because you get to spend a lot more time with the grandkids and I know that's very important. So um, with that, thank you for all your years of service and uh congratulations on your retirement. And everybody have a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. There's a quote by George Bernard Shaw and the gist of it is that, you know, all progress is because of the unreasonable man, so I don't know, maybe.
They split that on your gravestone.
Are you, are you serious? He said unreasonable man or did he say because of Steve Cook?
Uh, one other thing I want, I remembered, um, and I don't it's a good thing when you see it, but you know, now with the ice freezing on some of the stormwater ponds, especially like the Linden Park one, there's been a lot of skaters on it and don't want to be like a Scrooge. But uh, we know in the past we've discouraged that, so I don't know if, maybe there's some on the other ones too. But just wanted to mention that people need to be careful about that. See young children as well as adults and teenagers, but uh.
We can throw, we could even throw something on social media, just you're mindful people, that's, that's not well, they're a little bit different than your lake or other water body as well, so.
Okay, thanks. But thanks again, Gary. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Thanks, Steve. Entertain a motion? Nobody wants to go home tonight? Oh, Steve, you know.
Get him over. I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Steve, second by Dave to adjourn. Roll call, Chad?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I was thanks to Steve. We're adjourned.